Request we have on schedule, so we'll jump into new business recognition. We will start with Grecian Serenity Spa, Sabrina Malt. You could come up and tell us a little bit about your business.
I didn't know it was someone speaking.
Yep.
It was so, I may have fixed it on Carson and let him do it. So I opened up a massage shop. It's located across from the train depot. I offer different modalities of massage. It includes Swedish massage, pregnancy massage, bathing massage. I'm licensed in Virginia, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina. I can also help with pain management, sciatica, TMJ, tennis elbow, golfer's elbow, just to name a few. Right now, my Atiga aka Audisun has a website that says he will have it done by the end of this week. So you'll be able to find me there and book your massages. Or you can reach me by mobile or via my personal Facebook page.
Okay. We all look at.
Oh, thank you.
Gibbs for all the new business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next is Love Ya Babe Forest, Kathy Clifton. You can come right there or anywhere you want to go. There's no step rule.
So my name is Kayla Turner and this is my mom, Kathy Clifton. And we, as of last Thursday, opened Love Ya Babe Forest off of Fincastle. That's our brick and mortar location, but we're also online at loveyabebabeflores.com so you can place any orders there. We offer a variety of fresh and silk arrangements, flowering and green plants. In addition to Craig Clifton, his K-Hay craftsman, you might see some pieces in there. And then my wedding planning company, August and Aubrey, also operates out of Love Ya Babe. So we really pride ourselves in offering traditional, you know, timeless floral design that you've seen in the past while also offering some industry trends that maybe this community hasn't seen before. So we're really excited and we're happy to be here.
We've changed this up a lot. It's all new to me.
All right. A lot of reasons for theories. Slow I see.
Thank you guys for coming out. Appreciate it. Okay, so next on the agenda is the approval of the council meeting minutes on August 8, 2023, and special calls council on IDA work session, August 15, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. Next is the approval of the financial statements and the financial report from August 2023. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a quick question in regards to, it's on page seven. I mean, I think three questions total, but just, you know, as we're coming in, this would be like our first quarter, you know, checking the marks and seeing that we're within that 25 percentile. On the fire squad, I noticed that we had a $10,997 credit, looks like, for vehicle maintenance, and it just stood out. I was just curious if we got money back on vehicle maintenance?
I'll check it out. And I can report back to you. I'm not going to share what it is right off the bat.
Okay. And it may not be anything major. I was just curious about that. And then the second question I had was on page 20. And this one was a... It was just a pretty big transfer. It's the last line of capital expense. And I was just looking for some situational awareness in regards to, there's a $203,000 plus transfer from the general fund. Is that just to cover payments or?
Again, I could check it out. It might be the sewer funnel GIP, but I'll absolutely type up an explanation for both of them and report that one off the bat.
Okay, sorry. I wasn't intending for it to be a pop voice type thing. I'm trying to do that. And then the final question I had was in regards to, just looking for where the line item would be as we're working towards, you know, our pursuit of community block funds and the sports complex. I think we're going to be spending some money towards grant writing. Does that fall underneath the administration section of the budgets? Or curious as to where the grant writing funds would be pulled from in this? Yep. All right. Thank you. That's the only discussion I had.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor of approval of financial statements, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state so by saying nay. Next, motion carries. Next is the committee and conference updates. Councilmember Davis give us an update on the planning commission committee.
So we met last night because of the holiday and we had a... What was the address on that again?
138 Coraline.
Yeah, yeah. We had, someone is looking to do an Airbnb. So we looked over the plan, where it was located, went through the requirements for the special exceptions to it, and looks like it fits. So we referred it up to council to set a public hearing in October. And let's see. Yeah, that should be on here.
Yeah, it's in the business.
We talked about, someone had applied to set, to close off part of the street. We talked about that and Chris is going to go back to the person who applied and talk to them about a couple of different options that work with the town and see if they're still interested in going forward with that. And I'm sorry, Chris, we have one more.
The 320 Main Street site plan.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's the one we talked the most about. We had Louie Allison presented his preliminary plan for parking at the Obama Shore Building. What he is looking to do is, he's working on the top floor right now, and he presented parking for the number of apartments that would be on the top floor. And as he's working, he's going to come back and present what his plans are for the other two floors. So that was it.
We had a drawing in here, right, Chris?
Page 96.
Okay.
Now, 16 spaces on the west side of the spot where you said they were going to close off the street. Which side is that?
That was over on Orchard Street. It's over in North Tassle. I don't know that it's on our agenda since Chris was going to go back to the applicant. Yeah.
Maybe next month, then, off soon.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it?
Any questions? Okay, so we're going to move on to unfinished business. The second reading and approval and amendment to existing ordinance to allow substance abuse treatment clinic and private solar panel facility with a special exemption permit in an industrial general M1 zone, 35.
This will be the second reading. It'll be very brief. The ordinance amendment to existing ordinance, Chapter 23 zoning, Article 2 District Regulations, Division 10 Industrial General M1, Section 23-53 use be ordained by the council of town of Tassle, Virginia, that hereby enacts the following amendments. Town Council, Section 23-53 regarding permitted uses in an industrial general M1 zone. Section 23-53 use amended. Section 31 substance abuse treatment facility with special use permit subject to the provision that its provider cannot build cables in one half mile of public or private licensed daycare center or public or private K-12 school except when such services provided by a hospital licensed by the Board of Health or the Commissioner of Behavior of Health and Developmental Services or is owned or operated by an agency of common law. Subsection 32, private solar energy facility with special use permit, although its uses identified in sections would be 1 through 30 remain unchanged.
So do you need a roll call?
Yeah, but I need a roll call vote.
So first I need a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, so I need a roll call vote. Councilmember Beasley?
Aye.
Councilmember Catherine?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fox?
Aye.
And Councilmember Hanks?
Aye.
All right, so the amendments will move forward. So they'll be effective within 30 days.
30 days from today.
So next in the unfinished business section is the kids' own sense, manager day.
Okay, we can remove that vote on there, but I did want to give you a little bit of update. I think council's already voted enough on this Friday. I laid in front of you a drawing on the fences. That is the old original kids' own. They haven't updated GIS or Google yet, so it's just, the red is obviously a layout of the fence. On the south side of the drawing, which is actually true south, you can see that there's no fence and it's simply because it's tied into the existing pool fence on that, on that, on its south side. Everywhere you see a little star, and there's three of them. There's a gate, a three-foot gate, and the big gate is obviously for mowing equipment. But just wanted to give you the update on what will be installed, and that's a four-foot green fence.
So the one on the west, is that a double fence? The one on the west side of that?
The big one?
Yes.
Double gate.
Double fence, yeah. Yes, I'm sorry, the gate, yeah, that's just a mowing, mowing gate.
All right. Thank you, Todd. So next is proposed guidelines for donation requests. I think in your agenda, there's a new layout.
Okay, we, we, we talked about this and talked about it and, and we tried to, we tried to recognize the economy and also the tax dollars involved. And this is, again, I think if you were to give this question to 20 different people, you'd get 20 different recommendations, but I did take this before, three of my key staff and the recommendation you have in front of us. Please don't ask me how we got there. But I can tell you that it's only up, that bottom end only changed to give you a lower end bracket. So the upper end is pretty consistent with the low end regardless of... That's the only thing that would change. If you, if you like that, vote on it. If not, we can change it however you want to.
I just need a motion to approve. If there's an objection.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state so by saying nay. All right, so we'll start going by the new donation request guidelines. Any miscellaneous unfinished business? Okay, now we're going to jump into new business. Tuesday, so we'll get us some EMS comments.
Okay, I've been trying to get this on the agenda for, for a while and Cindy is usually only called or she's out with another town business, but I'm glad she's here and not with us. But every now and then, I think, and I need to do more of it, but recognize the people that make me successful, the people that I'm surrounded with. For those of you that know me very well, it's not me that makes it happen at all. I've got really good people around me. But just to give you a little bit of history on EMS, I could go all the way back and I'm going to try and Cindy, you helped me out. I'm going to go back to 2012. But I can tell you that in 2012, our EMS department lost right at $400,000 in operations. And that was before, you know, somewhere, somewhere in that era, the administration that was in office at the time took away the right for volunteers over 40 hours or over 32 hours. I don't even remember what it was, but I just know that you had to survive insurance. So things went dramatically. I think we picked up like nine full-time employees just because of the congressional legislation that passed just overnight. And they worked part-time, but anyway, 2000, I'm going to jump ahead to 2014. And I can tell you, 2012, 2013, we were still losing money. In 2015, we lost right at $117,000. And we were running one of the most reliable EMS in the county, probably in the region. And I've always told Cindy, who's been the administrator for many years, that regardless of cost, I want to provide the best of the best to the best of our ability. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. If not, we'll give it back to the county. In 2016, we were all working together to try, to try to learn EMS, learn new billing software, taking on ideas of making doing transports. And even in 2000, in 2016, we lost $274,000. 2017, we saw, we saw a deficit of 207. In 2018, we saw a deficit of 288,000. In 2019, we actually went and hired in 2018 more people. So I know a lot of you are thinking, well, if you were losing money when you had nine, why are you putting on more? But there was a strategic method to it, reason for it. The COVID also hit. But she was able, she was able in 2020 to pull that out. And we ended up closing that year, the first year of transports at $128,000 in the black. And right after that, the new, the new industry of transports, local government for the first time in the county, I guess still to this very day, were the only local government-owned rescue squad in the region that does transports. And there's only one reason for it. It's so that we can continue to offer an EMS without losing a bunch of money. The only way we could do it is to do transports. The COVID hit, went shut down transports, and we only lost $23,000 in '21. In '22, again, we were just getting back on our feet. But last year alone was the first year, I think, Cindy had the opportunity to really stretch out and some of the, some of the restrictions of COVID lifted. And we were, for the first time, really able to watch the transport division and the 911 division, emergency division, really materialize. But she closed out last year at $228,000 in the black. And that's huge. And a lot of people say, well, you know, EMS is the only, is one of the only operations that if, if it's not done at a local level, it has to go to county. By state code, county has to pick it up. I don't think there's anything else. If it is, I just don't know it. That the local level does. When I say local level, I mean at the town level. But we have fought and fought and fought and fought together, Cindy and I, and we bumped heads and we've changed courses and she has absolutely stood the test of time. And I know today, well, last week, she was operating in the black. We'll see how that continues after a year. But I just want to say thank you, Cindy, for the hard work. I know you put in a lot of miles and training and education and a lot of hard work and sweating into that. And nobody will have any idea what we've, what we've been through in the last 10 or 12 years to make that EMS work. But I just want to say thank you for your contribution. Thank you for that. And it does not go unrecognized by any separate form. Manager, since you're on the EMS, had a great job that did, last night, the ballgame, fourth quarter, Tassle won. I'm glad of that. And we had a patient that had a heart attack and they had to bring him back to life. And I watched every bit of that. And he was a good man from Mount Richlands. And I want to thank Dustin Taylor from the EMS, Chance Caudell, Ben Layton from the Police Department, Cody Thomas, Kyle O'Grubel, Amanda Thomas with the Tassle County Services. But if I saw the whole thing, this, this person was out of it. He was no, nothing, no pulse or anything. They start the CPR and the Police Department and EMS Rescue, they did it perfectly. They got this man back to life and this time he's in Marano Hospital, COVID. And I just want to thank the Police Department and the Rescue Squad for what they did. And it was amazing how they reacted, respond, and it's just, they work together. And that's what I liked about the Tassle Police and the Rescue Squad working together that way. If they ever happens to me, I hope they kind of pick me up, work me out. They are, it's a good team, it's a good team to work with. And I'm very proud of them. And Chief, have you heard anything else from this patient?
Cindy, you got the latest update. He's still in permanent.
Yeah, the ER doctor called me today and said that he had good pulses and good blood pressure when they blew him out last night, and he had an update today.
That's what I'm saying. I've seen this, man, it really, it really scared me of him going out. And then they brought him back and they really worked hard to get that patient back to life. So I admire the Rescue Squad. I admire the Tassle Police Department and their actions that night, it was last night. And the Rich, Richlands and Tassle game, boy, scared me a little bit. The third quarter, they come out and won. It was a backyard brawl, but they did a good job. Don't let the Bulldogs down. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Well, Cindy, thanks for our hard work at this. We sat with the county numerous times and we were juggling on both, you know, the best course of action, whether we would take it, let the county take it over, if we would continue to offer that service to our citizens. It looks like we've made the right call with that. It's been a big part of you, you know, running the shop there and doing such a great job.
I would say thank you.
We're going to give a speech, Cindy. Speech, speech, speech.
All right, we're round the polls here. So next is the Community Development Block Grant Resolution, manager day.
Okay. Amanda is working on a community development, community development block grant, and they, just like any other grants, they just need a resolution from the board approving. So I'd be more than happy to read, Mayor, you can...
I'd be more than happy to wait. Oh, come on.
So she's working on it? Is it for a particular outfit? Is it for her IDA?
Tell you what, I'll let Kara, you probably closer to it than I am.
I didn't have a resolution with Cindy presenting that, so I'll let you. What do you think?
There are several different entities that are working on it. Amanda's with Athletin Voices. Tassle County is in on it. There's, what are some of the others?
Quinn-Driver Rally Initiative.
Yeah.
Keep talking, keep talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the listening sessions, I think there was four different groups represented, maybe?
I believe so. And I think the...
Okay.
DTA is coming out on it. But it, it was a good listening session that they had, the one that I attended. There were several people that were out and several members of the community wanting to get involved, so.
We're excited to be working together, so thanks for our support.
All right, so we couldn't have made it any shorter. All right, resolution of support. Whereas the town of Tassle recognizes the importance of community development and enhancing the quality of life for its residents. And whereas the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development is offering the Community Development Block Plan, Planning Grant to support projects that align with the community's development goals. And whereas the North Tassle area of the town has been identified as a locality with potential for strategic development that can contribute to the economic growth and community well-being. And whereas the CDVG Planning Grant provides an opportunity for the town of Tassle to conduct comprehensive planning that will help identify and prioritize projects that address critical needs within the North Tassle area. And whereas the town of Tassle aims to foster community engagement and collaboration in the planning process involving residents, local businesses, and other stakeholders to ensure that the resulting projects truly reflect the community's aspirations. Now therefore be a resolved that the town of Tassle Town Council expresses its commitment to pursuing the Community Development Block Grant Planning Grant offered through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the North Tassle area of town. And furthermore be a resolved that the Town Council hereby authorizes and empowers top day town manager to take all necessary actions to apply for this, for and secure the CDVG Planning Grant, including the submission of required documents, coordination of community input, and collaboration with relevant agencies. And furthermore be a resolved that the Town Council emphasizes its dedication to conducting a transparent and inclusive planning process, which will involve regular updates to the public, opportunities for public input, and engagement with local organizations. And furthermore be a resolved that upon receiving the CDVG Planning Grant, the Town Council commits to utilizing the funds responsibly and efficiently, ensuring that the resulting planning efforts contribute effectively to the betterment of North Tassle area and its residents. And finally, be a resolved that the copy of this resolution shall be distributed to all relevant departments, agencies, and parties involved, as well as made available to the public through appropriate channels to ensure transparency and accountability in the pursuit of Community Development Block Grant Planning Grant for the North Tassle area, given under my hand this 12th day of September, 2023. Mayor Michael F. So I need a motion to approve the submission for the block grant.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state so by saying nay. All right, Todd, you can move forward with that one.
We'll get a mandate here at the next meeting. If you can, you know if they don't have it.
Okay. So next is to set a public hearing for a special exemption permit request for an Airbnb at 138 Coraline Avenue for Tuesday, October 10, 2023 at 7:15. So I need a motion to approve. So move. Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor setting a public hearing, state so by saying aye. All opposed, state so by saying nay. All right, so we'll see, at least at 7:15 in October. So next is the site plan approval for parking at 320 Main Street. So Chris, you said there was a picture. So Chris, you, you said there was a picture.
Ninety-five, ninety-six.
Ninety-six. A little blurry, but the blue little lines is the parking stops. Sixteen spaces are on the west side of the building. Again, this is just enough to cover the, the top floor, third floor. There is some extra spaces left over from the camp that we use, which is one and a half per bedroom. Sounds weird, but you got two bedrooms, you got three parking spaces. But that's what we're going with.
How many units?
We're trying to acquire the planes across West Avenue.
How many units is the apartment complex now?
He was talking about putting six on the very top floor. So this would be for those six spaces, but that would be ten bedrooms.
Right.
Seventeen in the wrong. It's seven or eight, we have ten or eight places.
I think he's talking about more, okay, so there would be four.
That's what I thought.
No, the apartment is probably, yeah, because there would be four apartments on the Main Street level and then six, either six or seven on the basement level. But this is just for that, that very top level.
He isn't talking with the man who likes to buy the land, just below.
Kind of diagram from it.
Yeah.
To, to the west of, west avenue.
Yeah.
Do you have any kind of complaints about that, or talk to anybody else?
Complaints?
Grabbed that parking.
I think all that's parked there right now is junk vehicles, right?
Uh, there's a tractor, maybe some good-natured trucks, a stall van.
Twenty cats.
And lights and cats.
Seventeen cats. They, they own that property though.
Yeah, the can of wax home of that.
Oh. No, the, the property where the proposed parking space was. That's.
Oh, this, 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 Cindy, they own that already.
This is, yeah, this is the property they own. They're trying to acquire the other properties for additional parking for later.
Well, I, I would say we could go have apartments, you're gonna have to have parking there.
Well, the reason y'all have to build on this is to have the commercial area and develop in all my district. That's why it's, has to go to the planning commissioner council.
But you won't, the planning commissioner approved for this, correct?
Yeah. If y'all see any stipulation that you want to add to it, you can.
Did, did he state anything, like, is it gonna pave it, is it gonna be gravel?
I think it says, that it's gonna be gravel for now.
It's about, it's probably paved, that's the problem.
This is gravel area.
I think you got a motion there.
I'll say it on the motion. Alright, any discussion? All in favor of approval, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Alright, so it's approved. Next under new business is miscellaneous. Didn't see anything. Anybody sign up to speak?
Let me have one.
Do we, someone sign? Okay, come on up, uh, state your name, address. Yeah, we don't have a mic here.
That's okay, I talk loud.
Certainly.
My name is Howard McFlure, Howard White McFlure. I live on Tanglewood Way. Been here about, I've been out there for a year and a half, been in Tazzle for two years. I'm retired. Was a mine inspector for thirty years, safety director. Did quite a bit, I was in a couple of mine disasters, but anyway, I came back here to be near my grandson. And what I want to talk about is a, a problem that we got out there. And I know people from Tazzle know more about it than I do. And they probably got a problem elsewhere, but I'm talking about coyotes. I have seen them, they have been eight feet from me and me next to the apartment building in, in, in three o'clock in the day. And I have talked to everybody about this problem. I've, there, I've seen them before twice. And I didn't know we had such a problem with them. I, I even seen one running down chasing a, a dog in broad daylight down the street. And that little dog was running for his life. And when I moved out there, I'd never fed a cat in my life. But I, stray started showing up on my rear deck and I feed them and I give them a name and they're my outside fur baby now. And these coyotes are active. And I've, I've lost two. But anyway, I've, I've talked to everybody I know to get help. I've talked to the state, I talked to the game warden today. The state's policy is, you can shoot these things, we, we're not coming in to help you. You have to shoot them yourself and take care of them. Game warden says, you don't need no special permit to kill a coyote. You can hunt whatever you want to. City says, the Town of Tazzle says, you can't fire a gun in, in town limits. And, and I understand that, you know? So, so the, so the second thing you look at is, well, bow hunt, you know, with a crossbow or bow. Well, then the city says, you have to be on two acres of land and up in a ten-foot tree stand, shoot. And I just ain't able to do that. I can't climb them ten foot, ten trees there and I can't go out in the middle of the line. I don't have special equipment to see them. So the last thing I thought of is trapping. You can trap these. And there's a lot of people around here that, that knows how to trap them. Of course, they charge for that, they charge for that though. And I don't know what the city's policy is on trapping coyotes.
I don't think we have one, do we? I mean, there's nothing in the cookbook about that.
We, we follow Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. And you, there is no season on coyotes, you can kill them year-round. But he's exactly right, he's a fire gun in Tanglewood Way.
Do you, you would, for coyotes, you wouldn't have to be in a tree stand over two acres, would you?
You're supposed to be shooting a bow in town unless you're shooting.
Unless it's urban archery?
Yeah. Close the air, goes afar.
Right.
Can't count on.
I just, I knew that was urban archery deer season, I didn't know if that was a specific.
We don't really have anything, so it, it reverts back to Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. But there's also, like the city trumps it, because we don't allow, just charge the fowl and the tank. In trapping, you can do that, but your, your neighbors got hoodles and cats. That's your cat.
Well, that, if they trapped, it would be up in the woods where their dens are. That's what, they wouldn't do it in the neighborhood. No, I, I agree with that.
But I think we have people like Todd that's up in the woods almost seven nights a week, you know, looking for them to kill them so they don't make it in the town or.
There, there is a bounty on them.
Well, I think there used to be, I don't know if there still is.
Did they stop it?
I'm, I'm not so sure.
I think they stopped it. Hey Todd, that, that air rocket you got, that works. I got one too now. Air rocket. That puts a pellet on. But you gotta make sure you're not sitting in a drink and going, ah.
Yeah, myself, I don't want to go around the neighborhood with a rifle.
We appreciate it.
Too much for my.
Put a big smile on your back.
See, I know this isn't the first time.
Cause they don't, everybody doesn't know you anymore, you know, so. I, I would like, I, I would like some help from the town if, if, if they, if they could, cause I'm telling you, it's a big problem. These coyotes will scale six-foot fence. If you got your dog inside that fenced yard, you think it's safe, it's not. He'll scale that fence, get your dog and take it back over the fence. They will attack small children. Especially, I've seen two of them together in a pack. So they will attack stuff like that.
How many have you seen so far?
I've seen four. Not last night, night before last, I take my dog out walking, we was out twelve o'clock at night, a little bit foggy. I look at the street and there's one crossing the street coming around to my bar. And, and listen, I can't, I, I don't want to watch, I don't want to, want to watch a coyote come up on my rear deck, grab my little fur baby in his mouth and take it off to eat it. So I'm standing out there with a flashlight, you know, that's all I got. Trying to scare them off. And I, I mean, I need the city to consider hiring a tracker to come up there and start a tanglewood and track those coyotes. And if anybody else has got any problem elsewhere in the, in the, in the town, I, I think that would be a good solution. It, it's not that expensive to hire a tracker. And I know you're not gonna get all of them, but you can reduce the amount of counties and make it safer for the community. It'd be a big help. If I could get help anywhere else, I would. If I was able to do stuff, the doctor going on to which said it is, I, I can't, a lot of things I can't do.
So we'll, we'll have Todd look into what, the possible cost of having someone coming in, maybe look at what other localities.
Yeah, I can report back, most trackers don't track this time of the year because of the heights, but it's all the weather they deal with.
So we'll, we'll look, and we'll check out what other localities, because we're not, we're not the only locality having a problem.
I appreciate it, thank, thank you for listening.
I'm telling you, I know for sure that there are several hunters that hunt on the hill back behind your house. And I'm sure that they try to kill everyone they see.
Yeah. I have no use for coyotes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on to council member comments. Anybody have any comments? Todd?
I'd like to brag on the, the Tazzle, Town of Tazzle Fire Department. A couple weeks ago, apartment building at Oxford Square, there was a fire, it was a very serious fire. Seven families got displaced. Richlands Fire Department requested air, ladder trucking. They were expedited down there, very instrumental in getting that fire contained before it spread to other.
They used a new ladder.
They did a very good job. Should be commended.
It works quick.
Anybody else? Alright, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor of adjourned, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Alright, we need adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming out, it's always good to see you. Crowd's sticking around.